Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners fortunately invite you to see their meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aleria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Okay, it's my understanding that we're at the point with the Justice Center of reviewing what departments will go into the building and the review engineering and cost reductions? Am I correct?
Well, I think we all view this a little differently and what our approach should be. With respect to your first comment about who should go into the building, my idea, and this is just my idea, I think we need to decide how big the building's going to be. And that will depend on, the size of the building depends on the cast, excuse me, the cap, I can't even talk this morning, the cap for the cost. And I think that things will flow after that, but I think, it's my opinion that we need to decide how much we're going to spend, and that will dictate who goes where as we work down the road.
But determining who goes in the building will determine the size?
Well, I guess the question is which came first, the chicken or the egg? So yes, one or the other.
Okay, so what are we doing?
Well, I think we're open for discussion. I think that's what we're doing.
I mean, what are we, what are we gonna make our decision? What is the decision gonna be today? On what issue? The size of the building? The amount?
What would be the best way to tackle this? Do you want me to just throw out my ideas and then we can go from there? Since I have a tendency to throw things out anyway.
You're not going to throw anything dangerous, are you?
No, not dangerously, nah, just political BS. I appreciate John coming in yesterday to talk to me. I appreciate that. It was a 20-minute meeting that turned into, I think, an hour and, two and a half hours, three hours. I apologize for your other appointment there, so, I appreciate that. I have met with a couple of other architects to get outside opinions that weren't paid on a commission basis to get their input. I appreciate their help. I still don't have what I want from them, but I think I have sufficient information to change some of my stances on what I felt the size should be earlier. I appreciate what Mr. Roca Cee has done. He has opened my eyes on what the budget process is about, and I'm thankful that we finally have a three-to-five-year plan in place to take a look at, to see where we're gonna be down the road. Instead of other issues that pop up, we deal, I don't like reactionary style of management. I'd rather be proactive and see where the future's gonna be and try to manage accordingly that way. So, now, what I have done, if you guys want me to share this with you now, I can show you where I think the courthouse should be, 'cause I think if I do this, I think that's where I'll answer Commissioner Vasie's question and maybe Commissioner Blair's, and the next line of questioning or answers. In March of 2000, we have a report here comparing the November approved program of, well, it says here 50.3 million-dollar Justice Center. They went back and did a value engineering reduction about, I think it was two weeks ago you did that for us, or last week I believe it was, and came back with $3.7 million off the 244,000 square foot Justice Center. So, the information I have today that I can somehow at least let the two commissioners know where I'm thinking, or what I'm thinking, doesn't have the reduction on the value engineering, it doesn't have that. So what I'm gonna do, because he can't give that, because if we keep going back and forth with three commissioners, he'll be working on three different projects, so I think would be good, is hopefully today we can come up with a decision to proceed so they can get us the final information. 'Cause I don't think we're gonna get the final information today, but we're gonna hopefully have a path that will be consistent. My thoughts are, we have an old courthouse, and, I hope I'm not interrupting you, Jim.
We can get the courthouse.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, Betty usually does this, I thought I'd step in this thing.
Thank you.
Mary Jo will do it in the next, I'm sure.
She's just too far away.
I know. But, taking a look at the old courthouse, I can tell you what I'm looking at is, I'm looking at the Court of Appeals, the visiting judge, and the prosecutor's office in the old courthouse. I'm also looking at, by doing this, we're down to five stories, and for the future courts, we will have three empty spaces for future development for future courts. We will have two on level five and one on level six. The probate will be on level four, and the clerk, his clerk's office will be on level one, in anticipation of the family court issue that may arise in the next couple of years. The numbers I came up with is by doing that, 'cause these numbers have different, on the work that they did already, shows different numbers, so what I do is add some numbers back in, like probate, since that was off. So I put in a total of 186,500 in square foot for the Justice Center, for the courthouse. And then what I came up with, with talking with everyone, is using the number of 164, which is what the new number, what the number is for the construction cost, we're at 39 and, I'm gonna say 40 million dollars, okay? That's without doing any value engineering reduction, which last time was done was $4 million. So I'm looking at the total project roughly at around $36 million. With $16 million borrowing, although I said 12, 10 to 12, by going up to 16, and going 20 million in cash versus 22, will have the budget, the general fund, be sound for the next, well, John, I think really it would just help the general fund out, probably till at least for the next six to seven years.
Correct.
That makes the general fund at least, where we wouldn't have to cut any services, and this would not be something that takes all of our borrowing away. And so instead of borrowing 29 million dollars, what I looked at was looking at borrowing maybe 16 million, and using about 20 million of the cash, even though 22 million of cash has already been allocated. So taking that other 2 million will help save the, some of the shortfalls that are going to happen, and keep the general fund solid, so we wouldn't have to cut any services. So that's kinda the quick homework, and like I said, I don't, the problem I think we're having is, it's the egg and the chicken routine. So it's almost, the architects and the construction managers, they can't sit there and please three commissioners, 'cause three commissioners I think have three different ideas. So I feel sorry for them right now, but maybe now it's time for me, I mean, I'm just letting you know what I've come up with. So those are the numbers that I've talked with everybody and...
I have a question on the number of floors. Did I hear you say that, I believe the approved structure in November was?
Was seven.
Seven? You have, you're suggesting we drop two floors and only have five?
They came back with the new design in March with a six-story building, and I, what I looked at was, if the prosecutor's in the old courthouse, that reduces another floor, it takes us down to five stories, and that saves another 3.2 million, I believe they said at one meeting. That's just an estimate, and we can't, I'm not gonna hold them to it. But what I did is I backed out the square footage, came up with 186,500, using their numbers of 164, came up with about 39.7. So I thought, okay, if we can have them do a value engineering study, 'cause we're at about 40 million right now doing it this way, maybe, if they knocked off 10%, I'm assuming another 10%, and I hate assuming, but let's just say 10% gets it down to 36. So, that's just the numbers that I came up with, since talking to as many people as I could in the last couple of months.
Okay, but again, I just wanted to verify, so you're suggesting that we reduce two floors?
From the 244,000 square foot, from the original plan. I was, I'm working off this new redesign plan that they prepared in March, which is six stories, this is six stories.
That's six stories.
Right. So the issue becomes, do we move the Court of Appeals, the visiting judge, and the prosecutor's office in the old courthouse? 'Cause if we don't, then we have to build another, we have to build the courthouse up, the new one. So that's, I think that's where the first discussion, and then you'll have to look, if we're gonna go with a five-story courthouse, then they need to go back and do a value engineering to say, hey, yeah, we can come in at this if we do a five-story courthouse. 'Cause they really can't, they can't give us, I don't think you can give us exact numbers on a value, I mean, that's the information I got from yesterday, is that you could do it in a week, right? You said you could do it in a week, but unfortunately he had appointments last night and it kept him long. You could've had it for us today, but that was my fault for, so I apologize.
I'd like to give some thoughts on it, too. John and I talked for about two and a half hours, too, and he did do the value engineering, and we do have this here.
Right.
And he did a cost reduction, and I would agree with almost all of them, John, with the exception of maybe three, unless somebody can convince me differently. And you, and when we talked, you talked about reducing the size of the basement and bringing the building down to ground level, and that would answer the ADA problem that we had with, when the people came in and they were concerned they wanted a ramp, it was gonna cost like another $60,000. You said to bring the walls in, in the basement, and just put the, what do you call it, the...
At that time, we were talking about putting the Sally Port and the secure parking that are currently in the basement, and as well as the detention facilities on the first floor, west end of the building, towards the altar building. So the lowering of the plaza, the lowering of the first floor has to work in conjunction with eliminating a majority of the basement.
I'm sorry, John, could you come to the microphone? I'm not doing my job, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
He was avoiding it.
John Vergala, Carboni Construction, were the construction managers. Commissioner Vasie to answer the question that you asked. At that time, we were talking about lowering the first floor to approximately six inches above grade. That change worked in conjunction with prior value engineering items where we were eliminating a majority of the facilities that were in the basement and moving them up to the first floor. That would be the detention facilities, the secure parking area, and the Sally Port. So there was a whole list of value engineering items, and unfortunately, tried to make them so that they were à la carte, and you could pick and choose the ones you want, but unfortunately some of them, you know, have to work together.
Correct. Was that included in this engineering study that you did?
Yes, I think it's line item one or two.
Yes, it is, basement through. Okay, that was one, a million dollars right there.
Right.
Okay, and my thoughts are, and I'd like to share this with you, I went through the budget, and I think there's another... And you can pass those down. I'd like to go over this with you just for one minute. If you notice that, look at the figures on the left. Those I believe we can take out of the budget and put it towards the Justice Center. There's an additional property purchase for the Justice Center, the additional property purchases. I don't think we need any more additional property for the Justice Center. So there's a million dollars, that's already in the budget.
Rebecca, what are you talking about?
We have in the budget, $1 million set aside for additional purchases of property for the Justice Center.
Where, you said it's written in here.
Pardon me?
You got it right here, paid out? Is that what you're talking about, right here?
No, that's something else. Look at the first, up on top where it says 1 million at the left-hand column. Right here?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking over here.
No, look up here first.
Okay.
Okay, there's a million dollars. Every figure that you see on the left-hand column is what I believe we could put towards the Justice Center. Now, we're talking about, the transit was in the budget, I left that alone because I don't know how you and Betty feel about that. But Clemmons and Nelsons would be the next one of $75,000. That's a labor contract, I believe that could be done in-house.
I agree with that.
So there's $75,000 savings. Workers' compensation services, I left that alone, not sure, maybe done in-house, maybe not, I don't know, that would be up to, that would be another decision in the future.
It's next week.
So you don't see a column on the left there to be put towards the Justice Center. Special fees, legal settlements, $12,000 set aside may not be needed. It's set aside in the budget right now, it may not be needed, so that might be another additional 12,000, but I didn't include it on the left-hand column. Gross site project, $900,000 one-time expense. If used this year, it won't be needed in 2002, there's another 90, $900,000. Lorain County Airport, what is actually needed? If you notice that, there's a comparison from 98, 99, 2000, 2001, and look at the difference that we've contributed. So what's actually needed at the airport? Chamber of Commerce, actual expenses, I'd like to know what the actual expenses are. 1999, we gave them 30,000, 2000, we gave them 60,000, 2001, we gave them 60,000 and increased it to 100,000. And now, you do see a figure on the left-hand side, 50,000. Outside legal services, we appropriated 100,000, I believe 50,000 of that is sufficient according to the spending in 1999 and 98. There wasn't, there, we didn't use any funding there, 2000, we had 50,000 set aside. So I believe 2001, we put 100,000. We don't need the entire 100,000, 50,000 would be sufficient. That's just a note to myself, bond issue costs approximately $5,000. Then going down, one-time expenditures, that's where the 90,000 came, 900,000 for Riverfront. Building machinery, obsolescence, there, I think there's a million dollars there.
Back up to the one-time expenditures. You're saying that there's $900,000 available?
The others have been paid. We have the City of Wellington, 180,000 is paid.
Yes, but I guess, I'm just asking, just for clarification, there was 1.7 million appropriated for 2001?
Correct. But there was, there's only 900,000 left that hasn't been spent, that would be available in 2002.
Okay, thank you, I just, I just wanna clarify that.
And the building machinery, obsolescence, there's another million dollars in there. Engineering fees, service, sewer project for Amherst, there's 1.4 million there that's not going to be needed. Lawsuits, litigations, I believe there's another million there. Of course, the cover's up to $6 million, and we've got an additional million set aside in the budget that I don't think we need. The sewer, Amherst, deferral assessments, there's another 189,000 that's not needed. Departmental equipment, there's nothing on the left side, but you get down to the bottom here. Unencumbered, there's $6 million in architect fees for the Justice Center, so that's already set aside, 6 million. Bond Retirement Fund, $8 million available. I'd say put that towards Justice Center. 10 million for the Justice Center set aside in 2001 budget, so we've all got, already, we already have $24 million set aside for the Justice Center. We need 26 million. So with the savings or these adjustments in the budget, I think we would come up with, actually, if we agree with that, we would have to borrow about $21 million for the Justice Center, leaving the space as it was at the 244,000 square foot.
But we're cutting services.
No, we're not cutting services.
Right here, we're taking...
This doesn't cut any services.
What's this, right here, this million here?
Where are you at? Which one isn't under? Building maintenance?
Yeah.
That doesn't, it's set aside, but we don't use all that. And I'm saying, keep 500,000 in there.
No, how much money do we, did you, 'cause I know we can get money out of the budget.
Correct.
What did you come up with? Because I thought, the number I came up with, with Mr. Roca Cee, was 22 million dollars. There was 9.4 million in the Bond Retirement Fund. Is that right, Mr. Roca Cee, or is that wrong?
That's correct.
Okay, we have 9.4 million. You earmarked $5 million coming out of the Bond Retirement to go towards the Justice Center, correct?
Towards the construction, correct.
Okay, so that's 5 million. We already have 10 million set aside, that's 15 million. And I heard there was 7 million that's already been encumbered.
In prior years, which is already...
Which is 22 million dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the number I was looking at. Now, is that the right number? Is 24 million the right number? There's $2 million there, that's a lot of money.
$22 million was committed to, or is committed to the project.
Would you repeat that, John?
22 million, as Commissioner Moore has indicated, has been committed or dedicated to the project.
As of, as of today.
Well, where's the, where's the difference? In the Bond Retirement Fund?
There's another 1.4 there.
Where?
No, that's an additional 1.4.
Where?
That's what he's saying. There's 9.4 in the Bond Retirement Fund right now.
So there's an additional million that we're talking about?
There's 1.4 million additional in the Bond Retirement Fund, and he's recommending 5 million come out of that to go towards capital expenditures such as the Justice Center.
10 million has been appropriated in this year's general fund. 7 million's already been committed in purchase orders in prior years, and 5 million can be extracted from the Bond Retirement Fund, so that is correct.
Can we pull out more out of the Bond Retirement Fund?
If the borrowing is less, Commissioner, that's possible, but right now, the analysis I had done was 29 million dollars. If there'd be less borrowing, and I can look at the microphone, then that certainly would alleviate the Bond Retirement Fund somewhat, yes.
Okay, well, anyway, from what I have on the left-hand column and from what's available, the 24 million that's available for the Justice Center, that's $30 million right there that we already can come up with if we agree on this.
Which are taking a million dollars away from the, from the Lorain County Transit. Right, they're taking away a million dollars right here, Lorain County Transit, on the first page. Is that right or wrong?
No, there's nothing from the Transit. There's nothing on the left-hand column. These are the figures that we're looking at.
Oh, what's, okay, additional property purchases, Justice Center, 1 million. Okay.
You want to keep putting that million down there.
Didn't you take some money, I thought you were going through to make our economic development program go, you kinda got some money from some of these programs. Will you do that, or no?
Well, I don't really want to be dragged into a controversy with this analysis.
This is not a controversy, this is a discussion.
We're just talking, man.
Yeah, we're just discussing this.
Since we're in the spirit of discussion...
Thank you.
We did put a million dollars aside for the property. We were looking at the Burger King building, there's been some resistance to selling that building at this time, so it's doubtful that any time during the year that we're going to pursue that any further. That was about a half a million dollars of that million. And then there was the Vero property, where they had the fuel tanks removed from the property, and we did indicate to them, if they did that work, that we would be interested in purchasing that property. I don't know where we would stand now, since they went through a lot of work to get the property up to the standards we wanted before we purchased, so I don't know if that's an issue or not, but...
Personally, I'm not interested in purchasing any more land for the Justice Center, I think we have enough.
I understand, I'm just...
Yeah, I know, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just...
Right, just indicating that with that. The one other thing here with the workers' comp services, and I know these are all just questionable things, we don't, we pay for somebody to go into litigation for us in court, right now we don't have any expertise anyplace else to do that. The prosecutor's office does not presently represent us on workers' comp and in our litigation in court. The, the only other thing that's a bit concerning to me is I had planned on doing the same thing you did to get the 1.5 million for the Port Authority, I was going to take it out of the excess in the Amherst Sewer Project, so that would be a competition there. So when we went to put the Port Authority together, I would need 1.5 million dollars, and unappropriated money of that money was unavailable here in some of these other areas to fund the Port Authority, so you may want to think, you know, when I come back, I'll probably be looking for that money sometime in June. The Monday after, the next, I'm going down to with Mr. Twain to testify in Columbus on our needs here and what our desires are, so maybe it's good that we make a decision now, because we're gonna need to make a commitment for that funding, and that's, our commitment right now is 1.5 million dollars. I had hoped not to use unappropriated monies to fund that. So those are just some issues here.
Well, the money might be available in the unappropriated to fund that, correct, John?
Yes, if I may, just add a little bit. My name is John Roca Cee, I'm the county budget director. Again, I did meet with Commissioner Moore and Commissioner Vasie yesterday, both had excellent ideas on saving money and coming up with...
And John, you have to speak a little louder, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or the microphone closer.
Thank you. So both commissioners had excellent ideas after meeting two hours with basically each commissioner, and it almost appears that both commissioners are kind of at odds on the way they want to approach that, and there's really no incompatibility here. I think they're heading in a parallel direction to save money. I think the thing that's important is Commissioner Vasie had come up yesterday with a candidate list of cost reductions in the discretionary area of the budget. And I think, in my opinion, what we need to do is really look at that particular list of all commissioners and then see which are really feasible or not. So, again, in short, I don't think there's an incompatibility in what's being done, it's just a matter of looking through those candidate items, and I think Mr. Cordez addressed one just a moment ago about what he was looking at, and possibly other board members in spending a portion of that Amherst money, and maybe Commissioner Vasie not looking at that at this moment. So, my opinion is, again, both commissioners are going down the same great path on this, looking at cost reductions and finalizing the issue, but I think what we need to do, in my opinion, is to go back on those candidate discretionary areas that Commissioner Vasie's looking at, and if the board would maybe agree on which ones would be acceptable and not, or not, that would be the best way to go on that.
Okay, well, if we do agree on those reductions there, whatever, changing that money over for the Justice Center, I estimate the borrowing will be about 20 million, 21 million. But then, there's other possibilities of reducing that 21 million, which would be the solid waste using the recycled carpeting. I know you gave me some figures, somebody gave me figures this morning, either the architects or the construction manager, a little packet, and it had the carpeting in there.
About a half a million, I think it was, wasn't it?
I think, was that another half?
Yes, $500,000.
Okay, there's another half a million maybe from solid waste money.
Yes, if we would have used...
And there might be some other recycled goods that we could use in there, and we have to look into these areas yet, too. But then Mike Willis was gonna look into state criminal justice department grants, and then I don't know if we can use CDBG, any CD, but in the renovation of this building, can we?
In this building, potentially, but not in new construction.
What about the courthouse?
Potentially, but not new construction.
We already used CDBG money in this building and in the courthouse several years ago to remove barriers. Would we be allowed to do it a second time, Ron?
No.
So it's a one-shot deal, right?
If there's another project...
Okay.
But we can't redo the removal of architectural barriers that's already been done, so it'd have to be a new and a distinct project, so we'd have to look to see what that definition is and if it meets the policy.
Thank you.
John, at this point in time, can you tell us how much unappropriated monies are available for this year?
Approximately, I believe, 4 to 5 million dollars. In fact, if you give me a moment, Commissioner, I may have the document, the certificate of At the beginning of the year, we had 3.5 million dollars, but I believe that's increased somewhat. But it would be probably in a range now of 4 to 5 million dollars.
But, John, I think we're pretty close, because you had 29 million estimated borrowing, but you didn't include what I just went over here. So if we were to include some of this, that would reduce your estimated borrowing of the 29 million, probably bring you about the same figure that I'm at now, if we include all this.
If the board decided, and there was an opinion to eliminate or reduce those discretionary areas, it would certainly help the borrowing.
And I think it would get us down to where you want to see us, if we can, if we can do this. And I think that the judges and all the users would be where they're supposed to be in the Justice Center, and then use the old courthouse for the visiting judges and whoever else just comes in periodically, Court of Appeals, visiting judges. I was giving some thought to this yesterday, and I wrote this up. Anyway, from the comparables that I received yesterday, from the architect, from the construction manager, it seemed like we were only like a dollar off. Mr. Moore was asking for...
150.
Was it?
150.
Or, no, square foot?
Cost?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You were asking for 150 to get it down to 150, but you asked for a comparable with the other...
Correct.
...Justice Centers that they've built, and I think we were a dollar off on what the comparables were.
I was asking for the, I was asking for the four examples you gave me, to give me those comparables, but instead I got 10 other Justice Centers throughout the country, and it was, it was good information to have. But I think if we're, I mean, we're talking $150 a square foot to $164 a square foot. I think the issue becomes how big of this, how big of a building we're going to build. If we go with the path what I already talked about, I'm always gonna say the word courthouse. If we start moving everybody else back in, I guess we'll go back to using the word Justice Center. So, because right now, I mean, the idea I have here, you know, we're talking a whole bunch... bunch of different things, we're talking about money, we're talking about who's going to be in there, we're talking about how big and how large, so I think you know where I stand. I mean, I'm looking at, if we can find more money in this, then I would like to reduce the borrowing back down to ten to twelve million instead of sixteen million, so keep it at thirty-six to forty. If we can find another four or five million dollars in here by, that's been budgeted, that we're not going to use, and reduce our borrowing from sixteen million down to ten or twelve, I don't even want to use all twenty-two million allocated, because then we're going to have a cash crunch probably in the year 2005, 2006, whether or not I'll be here after that, I don't know, but it's something I don't want to have on my shoulders, so that's what I'm more concerned about, is how much cash are we going to have? I believe a ten percent carryover is showing some financial...
Prudency.
Yeah, prud, yeah, thanks, prudent, so, not, not, not one percent.
But we're not taking, we're not tapping into that.
No, yeah, we are, we're...
No, we're not.
What we're doing is, I'm looking at the four to five-year projections that he's, that he did, some of these are one-time charges, correct?
That's correct.
And they're not on your budget for the next five years, they're only on there for one...
One time.
Correct.
And Commissioner Moore, some of the money for the economic development package that was proposed in February, and it was later approved by the Board, I didn't use any unappropriated or budgeted money, so it came out of some of the...
Some of these other...
Some of the areas in the budget, I don't know if it was these areas, but that's something that we'll have to fund, too, in the future.
Well, I know it didn't, because John and I went over these just yesterday.
Oh, no, I wasn't, I'm just, it's just that that's something that we'll have to have money for next year.
I mean, I've been working on this for about three weeks now, and constantly working with John on this.
Right, all I was indicating is that I didn't have to get any additional funding from unappropriated monies or anything this year to fund that, but you'll have to think about that next year. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars, probably about a half a million dollars each with the glide and the marketing, so...
More than that, it's nine a year.
Okay, this year, we were able to, we were able to move it around.
Correct.
Well, my focus is on building a type of facility that demands longevity, it should stand for a hundred to two hundred years, and will the building that we're building be worthy of restoring later? That's what I want to make sure, and I keep insisting on, on the quality.
I haven't, I haven't cut on anything, all I've done was, was taken the size down to a hundred and eighty-six-five, and a five-story building, without them going and doing any value engineering reductions, that's, because we couldn't do that really without having the actual numbers, so, right now, if I come up with thirty-nine million with that formula, and he comes back with maybe a ten percent of that down, let's say even three million, we're down to thirty-six, and we haven't cut on anything, okay, we really haven't.
You've cut on space.
No, well, yeah, I've cut on space, but would build out for three more courtrooms in the future when we grow, and keeping the old courthouse, so the issue is, do we keep the old courthouse, yes or no? If we don't, then I guess we're going to have to build a bigger building, if we're going to keep the courthouse, then how are we going to use it? Are we going to use it for these, because then these three individuals I mentioned are not going to be in the old courthouse, so how do you guys want to proceed? Would you want to discuss the old courthouse first? Is that, is that an option? Keeping the courthouse, is that an option? If it's not an option...
I say, I just mentioned, keeping it and bringing it...
It already belongs to us.
And the city of Alaria has not responded by the deadline that we gave them, so it appears that by non-response, that our offer is off the table, so it's up to us what we wish to do with the courthouse.
I would say use it for the appealing...
For the Court of Appeals?
Court of Appeals.
Visiting judge?
And the visiting judge.
And the...
I don't think you can put the prosecutor in there.
No, I won't.
There's not enough room.
Prosecutor in there. Okay. And then...
That's why I paused, because now we have, all you need is two rooms for a visiting judge and a Court of Appeals. We have, how many, how many courtrooms do we have over there? We have two that are very nice, that would be good for this type of activity.
Right, if we renovated the building, I'm sure we can keep two court, two very nice courtrooms and do away with some of the other stuff there, so at least we'd have those two, at least.
But those two rooms do nothing in reducing the cost of the Justice Center.
Well, here we have, we can still reduce the cost by these reductions...
They're just two rooms.
The value engineering reductions, too, there's possible another three million if we wanted to go through all that.
But those value engineering reductions, John, would you help me out on this, because I want to make sure I understand that if we proceed with using your value engineering suggestions, that it's going to require some redoing of the plans, is that correct?
Yes, in order to save the proposed 3.7 million, we would have to step back several months in the design process and go through a complete redesign of the building to make those adjustments in the size of the building and the use of the facilities.
Sounds like we're going to have to anyway, though, Betty.
For fourteen million dollar savings, that wouldn't bother me.
Okay, I guess I was kind of going someplace with that, though. It's interesting how we've all approached this from a different point of view. It'd be, and our discussion, then you estimated that it would take four months, plus there would be a cost for that, too.
Yeah, if any redesign that we'd have to do for the schematic design or design development that's already done, we'd have to step back and take four to five months, depending upon the scope of the work, and there would be a design fee associated with that, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Vacy, are you suggesting that, I think I hearing you suggest that we stay with the original 243,000 square feet that was at approximately forty-nine point nine, and then have them do this act, further value engineering and cost reductions?
I think we should go over that, like there was, like the brick, he was talking about the brick, how much additional work is it to redesign the brick or the sidewalk? That can't be too much additional work, I mean, there's simple things, to me, are simple in here, that wouldn't take a lot of design work, but I'm not an architect and I'm not an engineer, so you tell me.
Well, some of the items that were on that value engineering list would require a major redesign, there were a couple of items on there of about a million dollars each, and that would take a million, I mean, that would take a major redesign. The changing of the brick would not be. If we're making changes like changing the brick and the finishes, some of the finishes in the public areas, we probably could pretty much run with where we're at, at the end of design development. All right? So, depending upon the level of cutbacks, we would have to take more or less time to redesign.
But, but those are minor changes, and they also have minor price tags with them, I'm not...
Right.
The, the major items that have the bigger price tag reductions are...
Basement and the Sallyport?
Yes, and, and those are, yes, Mr. Gordon.
I don't know whether this is relevant or not.
Please, please come forward and tell us what you have to say.
You know, there's, this is a good list to consider, and I, I'm not sure we can decide on each item, you know, in this forum, but I would say that, you know, the one thing that would concern me would be the relocation of the Sallyport and the detention area, because land is so precious there in terms of parking and so forth, and you're going to take more, more land on the main level for the location of that in some other place. And I think the sheriff, you know, worked very closely with the architectural team to, you know, get the security worked out and get that location so that there's minimum, you know, connection to the elevating system to the courtroom, so we would be, you know, how that circulation would be worked out and, you know, the connections for, for that and would be something that we would have a lot of concern about. I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but I, I'm saying that it could compromise the layout and the security of the building, not to mention that it would possibly limit, you know, expansion to the west in the future in, in some compromising kind of way, so I, that's one issue, that I think the other item would be that, you know, we wrestled with the, the height of the building, the first floor line quite a bit, and of course, the Ohio, the State of Ohio Supreme Court security guidelines is what we were designing this building by, and, you know, the, the floor line is raised off of the main grade for security reasons, and we realized that that gives us some issues with ADA, but we, we had resolved and solved those issues, so I would be concerned with changing the floor elevation that much, too, and I'm not sure that was a big, big cost item, but...
However, is there not more than one way to address the concerns of the court with respect to the height of the building?
From the, from the grade?
Yes. I mean, I, I think there are other ways that you could address that.
Well, that's, that's what was recommended to be done.
But, but I guess what I'm trying to say is that sometimes there are more than, there are more, there is more than one way to accomplish a desired goal and or end, and while this, this is the one you've suggested, there might be another way that you could do that.
And I'm sure we would be more than willing to explore that, but I was just trying to, before you just, you know, make that decision, I'd want to make sure that we're not compromising the security and the issues that, you know, the Ohio Supreme Court security guidelines recommend, so...
Is that for the courtrooms only, or the entire?
It's for the, it's for the entire structure.
Okay, I think we would have to probably go over each one of these line item with the architect before we can make a final decision on it.
Well, I think that's what we would suggest, so that, you know, you really understand the, you know, the issues that involve in these pieces. The height, the floor-to-floor height is also an issue when it comes to clearance over the judge's area of the court, courtroom itself, and, you know, those, HOK is, you know, has a lot of courtroom experience, and, you know, we looked at those heights pretty carefully, and if you get the height too low, we are going to, you know, make everything, you know, it's going to, the ceiling's going to be right at the judge's head practically, and then we have, you know, lots of systems in the building that are going to be, I think, perhaps difficult to incorporate into those, those lower floor-to-floor heights. It's not something that couldn't be looked at, and maybe there's a, there's a middle ground that could be looked at there, but before you just decide that's what you're going to do, I think you, I think the engineering people would want to make sure that we can accomplish those kinds of things.
Right, I guess that the focus from the Board would be if we would, if we would determine that we wanted you to look at this, then we would expect you to come back in a period of time with various recommendations.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'd be happy to do that. I'm just reacting to what I see on this piece of paper right now, and just...
On the value, I mean, what I was looking at yesterday and the value engineering that was done, is the building, someone asked me, is the building defend, has a defensible design? Do you think, is that something we're going to have to spend extra money on?
What do you, and, and what do you mean by defensible design?
Well, with Cincinnati and Oklahoma.
Your defense.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm concerned about lowering the first floor.
No, but is it a defensible design, up with the recent changes in the federal last two or three years?
It's, it's, I would say that HOK, I'm not positive on every aspect, but they certainly were looking at all those issues as they were designing the entrances and the floor levels and security systems and, you know, Sallyport access and so forth.
You don't know yet, then? I didn't see it in there, that's why.
The answer is probably no, you have a sidewalk between Third Street and the side of the building, anytime you can get a vehicle to within that amount of room of the building...
But what I'm wondering about those, what happens if we're forced, because we are building this, due to federal regs, that we might have to put in?
Usually, in order to make a defensible building, you have a certain amount of clearance between roads or non-authorized vehicle access or closeness to the building, they're like the drive-up a van with a bomb in it, somebody could actually get within about four feet of the side of this building, drop the van, and boom, you're gone, so in order to be defensible, you would have to have a larger amount of land and then control access from a distance into the Sallyport and the parking, that would be considered a defensible measure. That's not available with the limited amount of space in downtown Alaria.
How about, I was, I was told that we don't get this information until after it's built, but, or after you start bidding, but do you have a schedule of values on this building, or do you just do this based on square footage?
Well, the construction manager did a very complete estimate at the end of design development, and, you know, we've been, I mean, they have a, you know, detailed takeoff on each of the items in the building, so...
It was a value, it was more, that was more value engineering, I'm looking at, was it, was it done? If it wasn't done, it wasn't done, work from top to bottom, all the cost, was that done or not?
Yes.
It was done? Because all I got is something that's more like a...
Yeah, John, you may not have all that, that backup, but Carbone did, you know, detailed...
I received it yesterday.
Yeah, there it is. You know, asking the mayor of Alaria to reduce the permit cost of 220,000 dollars may help us out a bit, too.
But he's going to want the courthouse.
I think the other thing that could be done is, I thought that HOK's March proposal, which took about 50,000 square feet out of the building, with, we thought, you know, the users, they went back to the users and went through everything, there were some reductions on spaces, the holding areas in the basement, a lot of things were reduced. The sheriff was willing to look at that, and some of those things were reduced, the workstation sizes were reduced, there were a lot of things that really, I thought, made a lot of sense without compromising the overall program in the proposal that Bob Schwartz made in, in March, and that brought the square footage down to a hundred and...
Ninety-four thousand.
Hundred ninety-four thousand square feet, and what, what might make sense is the floor that the prosecutor was located on was finished in that, I think, in that approach, and rather than make the decision of, well, is the prosecutor in the building or is in, or in the old courthouse, we needed, you know, it might make sense to shell that floor rather than make the decision right now, which would give you the future alternative without making the decision at this point. I thought it made a lot of sense, but, you know, it's not the architect's decision on who goes in the building or who doesn't, but it allows the, the building to go forward without, you know, ultimately making, making that decision.
But you would have to do some changes, the schematic changes, I'm not using the proper terminology, but there's still that...
Some, but with Bob's proposal, it was mostly some locations of, of areas of users, some different relationships, but, you know, the footprint of the building was pretty much the same, and the first two floors to the west were reduced by several bays, but by and large, the, the concept still remained pretty much intact, it took one level off of the building, but, you know, we felt that we could go forward with, you know, a lot of the engineering, a lot of the decisions that had been made, obviously, there's going to be modifications that have to be made, but not as, in such a drastic, drastic way. It seemed to us to be a very logical kind of approach to reducing the, you know, reducing the cost, capital cost.
Okay, well, John said we have an extra, last I knew, we had 2.9 in general fund. When we did it then, we got the new revenue, so we're between four and five, so I'm looking at, if we're, we have to decide on how much we're going to borrow, how much cash we're going to put towards a project, my number's changed to 38 million dollars, based on my analogy that I spoke of earlier, so if this analogy's down to 42 to 44 million...
You think we're getting close?
Yeah, I think, let's see, I think, I think we are.
I think we're very, I really think we're, I, I think we're very close, I think it's important that, you know, we work as a, you know, the construction manager and the architect work together to, you know, review this list and to make sure that these are, some of these things are accomplishable, but, you know, we feel pretty optimistic about, you know, achieving, but we're, we're trying to do this without compromising the, you know, the program of the building and the, and the relationships that I think are important to, to the users of the building.
Now, taking a look at the March program that you just said that you felt the users were happy with, after you revisited...
Yes.
What you didn't have in there was probate, and that's about 8,500 square feet?
Yes.
I had that in there when I said 186.5, so by adding back in the 16.4 for the prosecuting attorney, it takes us up to 202,900 square feet.
Yeah, but there's some shelf space that maybe the probate could go into the shelf, I'm not sure, but...
Probably, yeah, I already had them going into the, I already did that calculation.
Oh, okay.
So, that's why we had, we had three, we had four shelves, four courtrooms that were, I just took it down to three, and put them in one of the shelf spaces, so... So if we can build a 200, 2,000 square foot building and keep it at six stories for 36, 38 million, I'd be a happy guy.
Well, I would like to leave all the original occupants in the shelves and the shelf space as original... space as originally planned, but I would omit the law library and the Court of Appeals, because I think that that can go in the...
And the visiting court.
And the visiting, is that on here? Yes, it is.
What about the adult probation?
Adult probation, I think should go in there.
You think it should? See, I think it should go, I don't think it should, but...
You know, I kind of look at it like this, there's, over half of our budget goes into the functions of the justice and safety in this county. That's over half of our budget right now.
More like two-thirds.
Well, 51% is what we calculated.
Well, I guess that isn't two-thirds, but I thought it was more than 51%.
And our mission is to provide those services mandated by the statute of the state in an efficient and effective manner within the limits of sound economic responsibility. So I think we're, we're kind of reaching that point right now.
Yeah, right.
And just like yourself, Commissioner Moore, you know, I don't want to leave a legacy of debt, insufficient space, or a poor quality of building, or piecemeal a justice center.
Or not doing that.
And by taking a short-term view of what is most functional now, it, it must be functional in the future, too. So that's why I'm thinking, leave everything in there the way it was planned, the users, I mean, they, they went through some, some extensive meetings with the users.
No, I, I think we finally do have extension, extensive planning with Mr. Roca's these numbers, and I think borrowing only 16 million and using 22 million dollars in cash, that gets us up to 38 million, and we should be safe with these numbers till 2007, without cutting services.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what, all I'm worried about is not cutting other services on the backs of a courthouse. That's all I'm worried about.
Well, would you agree to some of these, well, would you agree to some of these changes in our budget, or just transferring some of the money?
Well, that's another discussion, because it looks like other people have already done that to get other programs going. That's what Mr. Cortez, and that's, that's why we have another meeting.
No, not, not in total. Commissioner, Commissioner Vacy has a lot of stuff here, and some of them are discussion points that she did not pull money out yet, that she put in. If I'm understanding you is correct, Ms. Vacy, some of these you wanted to talk about, you just made notes, but you didn't have any money from...
Right, there's nothing in left-hand corner.
Right, exactly. And some of them probably bears attention. She left them open for, for the open discussion, because it wasn't really readily assess, accessible whether there, that we could remove money from those things, and we had talked about a few of them earlier.
I guess that I would like to ask the board if, having heard all the discussion this morning, am I, I think that, I think Mr. Gordon has made a recommendation to us that they, they did what the board asked them to do early on, and they went back and they looked at some reductions and came down to 194,000 square feet. Now, I don't know, you added on 8,500, you brought it up to 202,000.
I did that because I think they were keeping probate in where they were at, and in my 100, what I did is I took the 186.5 and added the prosecutor's office in there. That's how I came up with 202, because in this plan here that they came in March, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys had probate staying where they were at, correct? Okay. I want to probate over to the new courthouse because of the, that's what I was, that's what they, that's what they did.
Okay, well, I guess I'm trying to get, and I apologize, I want a square footage. That, I'm sorry, I work at it from that angle. And, morning, Bob.
Good morning. I'm Bob Wiegant with Collins, Gordon, Boskew, Architects. Your gross square footage number, 194,000 square feet, will not change if you put probate into this building. We have shelf space as part of that 194. If you put probate into the shelf space, we didn't add one square foot. We did add the cost, though, for fitting out that shelf space.
Okay, so then I guess I'm, if I want to work on 194,000 square feet, I'm all right.
Well, if I could say, I mean, three things go into buying of a car, a tie, a sandwich, or a building. Quality, quantity, and cost. Commissioner Vacy's very concerned about the quality of the building. She wants the building to last 100, 200 years. That implies a certain quality of material. Commissioner Moore is concerned about the cost. He wants to hit a target price cost. And you, Commissioner, are concerned about who's in the building.
No, no, I want to know the size.
Well, that depends upon the area. If you tell us the prosecutor's in, they need so many square feet. If the probate court is in, they need so many square feet. So I got quality, I got quantity, and I got cost.
Got everything you need, right?
You can have two of them, but let us control the third. You know, you tell us you want a Cadillac with everything on it, we'll tell you what it costs, but if you say you had a Cadillac, you only want to spend $15,000, I'll tell you, you might get tires, you know. So there has to be some flex here. You know, give us that goal, we can tell you we can get with that goal.
Okay, thanks. I just, I want to go back to my 194,000 square feet, though.
Another question.
Yes, your March, April, rather, your April proposal, the prosecutor was in that building.
Yes.
Okay, so the only issue is the probate court, adult probation, and the law library, and you can fit probate in there with a little bit of working in the shelf space. We're gonna have to do something about adult probation if we don't say they're there. And the law library, it seems that they have a nice facility downstairs. I believe it was initially my suggestion that if this is gonna be a justice center, they ought to be over there, but it is rather a costly item, and sometimes you have to give a little in order to get a little. So I guess I would like to suggest to the board that we zero in on the 194,000 that they proposed to us with the reduced program and ask, and that you're going to have to do some things to get there. And then in addition to that, I, I would like you to look at the...
Value, engineering reduction?
Engineering reductions, and see how that might fit in there, too, because there is a potential for us to come up with some more cost savings if in fact we do that. What do you think about that?
Does that help Mr. Roca see out, so that he can come up with our, so he can reevaluate the budget to make sure we can...
Yeah, it certainly does, Commissioner.
Coming up with a square, with a, a size of a building instead of the cost helps you, or no?
The two ingredients that were just mentioned by Commissioner Blair are very helpful. In other words, the 194,000 square feet, once the value engineering is done, then I, as a fiscal person, can simply take the 194,000, I'm oversimplifying maybe a little bit, but take the 194,000 square feet and then integrate that into what the value engineering results will be with dollars, and I could come up with a total projected value of that justice center. That will lead to borrowing scenario and so forth. So I think once the square footage, in my opinion, is, is at least semi-finalized, or at least a projection's made of the square footage, and the value engineering is done with costs associated with that, then I could move on, the borrowing and things that would follow.
What you said, it'd take about a week, John, to get that?
If you'd like to set some parameters for what departments are in and which ones are out.
I think we just...
And, and hold it to around the 194,000. If you give us about a week, we can come back with a statement of what we expect that value to be.
Okay.
And I'm sure that Collins, Gordon, Boskew can also come up with some sketches to show where they would be on what floors.
And what about these savings? I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner.
You went to the mediation clashes. I wish you had your little buttons right here, right now, but...
I, I went to it, but you guys scare me.
But anyway, my thoughts are this, okay? Commissioner Moore, you're talking about Court of Appeals, and I think I was agreeing with you, the Court of Appeals and the visiting court to go into the old courthouse, correct?
With the prosecutor, yes.
Yeah, well, you included the prosecutor, I'm a little...
Yeah, I know, I'm just worried that now we have two offices that aren't that large, it's gonna be in an empty building.
Two offices, what are you talking about?
I'm talking about...
And the old courthouse?
Yeah.
We can remodel that. We can make it beautifully on the road, I'm sorry.
We'll put Jim in there.
Anyway, there's, there's 36,800 square foot, and then if you eliminate the law library, there's another 7,000, there's 43,800 square foot. So now take that away from the 243.
What's the same, we're all within 5,000 square feet, that's all. I went 190, we're at 194. You just subtracted 240 or 40.
No, I'm right here.
Hey, you just subtracted how many, 40,000?
No, 43,800.
You're at 200. We're talking, give or take, 6,000 square feet, and a lot of that's probably, they're gonna have to redesign it and say, what, I mean, we're all, it sounds like we're close.
I guess the issue really is, what do we lose going from down to 194? My understanding of that is adult probation's out of the building. There's a reduction in the allocation of total square footage to each department, but we have all, essentially, Commissioner Vacy, we have all the departments in the building with the exception of adult probation. Am I misunderstanding that? And the law library, which...
Law library and the two courts.
Well, the probate would be in the 194.
Court of Appeals and visiting...
It's gonna stay in there.
Court of Appeals and visiting judge.
Now, they'll also have some courtrooms for future build-out, is that correct, Bob?
Three.
Now, now, let me ask you, couldn't one of those courts be used for Court of Appeals if necessary?
Sure.
So, we actually, in the interim, while we, it may be more beneficial to build that space now, use for Court of Appeals, and at the time when the county grows, then we move to Court of Appeals, and we'll have the space available for additional court expansion. So I, I think we're close to accomplishing the goals of the three commissioners, except the adult probation would be out of the building.
I'd like to see them in there. I mean, if we're gonna do this, let's do it.
How much space does adult probation need? How much space was allocated to them? I'm sorry, I could look myself, but it's easier to ask you.
6,700 square foot.
7,600.
7,000.
And we were also told by the user team, the judicial user team, that the probate court, because they're not in session every day, they will share their space with the Court of Appeals. So there was gonna be some sharing of that space already with Judge Horvath. He volunteered that, in fact, right now, he volunteered that to keep it.
Which I think you wrote, that's in here, right here.
But Bob, you said that the 194,000 square foot included probate court, but it doesn't have mine.
That's a gross square foot of an entire shell of a building. Now, we have empty courtroom space. Now, if you want to put the probate court in, we have the gross square footies there, we just didn't have to pay for a fit-out for a courtroom. John, I'm guessing a bit of 70, 80 dollars a square foot for the fit-out price? Okay, so we'll take the price of a courtroom, which is 1,500, 1,600 square feet? I'm going real quick here, times a 70-some dollars, so there's some cost that would have to be included then to fit out an empty room.
Well, okay.
But the gross square footage is there.
I think where we're at, then, is the majority of the board would like to have a prosecutor in there, and then we, I think we're leaning towards a 194, and I think that gives you enough information to come back with value engineered reductions to get closer to the guy who's worried about the cost.
Sure.
Now, don't say that we're not, that's not fair.
Well, he's the one that tagged me, I didn't, he's the one that said...
Now, Randy Gordon also did suggest, Commissioner, Mr. Gordon did suggest that, as we have right now, prosecutor is in the building. You know, we could leave that whole floor space shelled and keep the prosecutor someplace else.
No.
He's gotta go over there, we need the space.
Okay, the goal, that prosecutor's space, though, is also future courts. Remember, the goal was to have 16 courtrooms when we're all done with this in the year 2025. If we remove that prosecutor floor, then we only have capability of having 12 courtrooms, and we do not achieve the 2025 goal. I just wanted to remind you of that.
So are you saying that we have to keep it at the 243,000 square foot?
No, no, we can make this all work with that, we'll call it the prosecutor floor. Whether the prosecutor's on there or not, we don't know, but we'll keep that prosecutor floor, as we call it. The building would stay a six-story building. This would be from our, our March of 2001 recommendation.
Someone along the line, I don't want to muddy the waters, but someone suggested to me, I think it was John, but I don't want to give you too much credit. Maybe it wasn't, I, after a while, you forget who you talk to, but instead of having shelf space on various different floors when you do this, let's just have one floor of shelf space and three, or, I didn't remember, it was three, three stories? John, you did, you did make that suggestion, didn't you?
I don't think we have that much shelf space, though, not in the, not in the March issue.
Well, the thought was, combining the courts on the one floor, you know, consolidating the courts on the one floor. The downside of that, and after review of this with the, the judges, is that domestic court judges work differently from general division courts, and the way their chambers are laid out, the services on those respective floors are different. So that's why we try to keep the general division separate from the domestics.
Okay, but I guess the bottom line is that, what cost? And, and someone needs to address this issue for me.
So, I don't think...
John, you have to put that number together.
Yeah, we can put that number together. The point we're trying to make was that the plan that Randy had recommended to you, 194,000, had vacant space on floor five and floor four that could be future courtrooms. Now, because of that, we had to build all the corridors and all the toilet rooms and all the ancillary space that goes with that. We could reduce some of that cost if we could make all the future courts be on one floor. That is, that a floor that's designated to be courtrooms would be completely empty to handle 2025.
And I think that...
And that, that's like a value engineering idea.
That suggestion kind of makes sense without looking into all the things involved with it. But I, if, if we're gonna do this, if we're gonna go back and look at this, I would like you to look at that aspect of it as well.
You can do that.
Yeah, as I heard that we were hypothesizing there, that we look at the 194, put the probate, no, put the probate back in. Put the probate back in. Now, the probate clerks would be in space that would be a future judge. So if we, or future courtroom, if we had to expand the courtrooms, then we'd have to find a new place for the probate clerks to go.
I, I like the concept of the, you guys did two different, three different types of concept on the probate courts. One where the clerk was with the other clerks.
Yeah, and I think that's worthy of, of recognizing the point.
As long as you just have the options available for us like that, that makes for good discussion. I don't think we have to decide how it's gonna be. I think the probate court should be over there now, but I think what we should do is let you guys get back to doing what you do best and get us some numbers.
Yes, adding the probate clerks to the first floor with the other...
Just want to clarify the point so that you understand.
So we're not, that means that we're not cutting any of that space down that we had for the public?
No, that's not correct. In the 194,000 plan...
We are.
We have reduced the size of the entrance lobby.
About what, two feet?
700, 900?
Square feet.
900 square feet.
Yeah. Probably something like 30 by 30.
About the size of our...
900 square foot of that lobby has been reduced to get down to the 194,000.
Everybody sacrificed.
But the bottom line was, it, it's still, the concept is still there, the design, the original intent of the design is still there. It's just a matter of, you guys need guidance from this board, I think, to say where we're gonna go, right?
Yeah.
I see none of that.
Where are we going with the skylight, too, so we have some natural light?
I think...
The, the skylight was a, a value engineering option that we proposed that you could save, was $126,000. If you eliminate that skylight, you save the money, but then you don't have natural light coming into the building, into the center portion of the building.
However, we also reduced the building, so otherwise, from the front to back, is a lot narrower. There are exterior windows on the exterior, so do we really need light getting into the middle of the building when we reduce the width and the depth? We, we feel that skylights could be deleted.
If the board were to pass a motion today authorizing the 194,000 square feet and asking you to look at these value engineering items, together with just keeping one floor open, because that's kind of what I'm interested in, when could you come back to us with some concrete information?
We could be back a week from today.
A week?
Let's say, make it two weeks. I, we have to get some commitments from St. Louis.
I'm sorry?
Two weeks, please?
Two weeks?
Oh, geez, you guys are killing me. I'm kidding.
He's the one that said a week, and he doesn't have to draw it.
So you're gonna come up with two things. You're gonna, basically, you've already designed it kind of, I know on your, it's not like what you did in the first one, but, but you're gonna come back with some value engineering.
Within this next two weeks, we can get together with John and talk about the different color brick and some of the other items that he had on that list.
You're gonna have a value engineering report like this and a reduction? Is that what you're gonna have?
We'll have our responses to John saying, yes, we could change the number of brick color, the size, or some of the other detail that he offered. We can, we can give you that report and response.
Could you have this report on 194,000 square foot building?
I think what you're holding up there is the 22-page line item estimate.
248,000. You had the line item estimate of all our costs?
We would not be able to generate a new estimate in two weeks with the amount of drawings that Council of Boston would generate. What we'd have to do is kind of come at it backwards. We'd take that estimate of cost and create a schedule of cost reductions off of that to come up with a new projected cost.
So you're going to use like percentages, pretty much?
116.
Some would be, but some could actually be, you know, actual quantities estimated.
Okay.
The estimate that you have there even includes every single door, every single doorknob.
Right, right.
We're not going to have that kind of detail on this next round.
There's just like 50,000 dollar copper door? I'm just, I'm doing this for Bob Kish, who brought it up two weeks ago.
Copper door.
It's not on there. It's not on there, Bob, so.
There's one question that hasn't been asked.
Well, wait.
Cubic feet, 16-foot floors?
That's, I think, going to be our discussion.
That's part of the discussion under the value engineering.
Under value, that was, that was something they discussed, and they brought on a number, it was a number one?
Mm-hmm.
If I may, just to make you aware of all the details, Mr. Gordon said, as you know, a judge, and even including yourself, you are on the platform, just as a judge is also on the platform. We do have large spans, as we have a large span in this room, where we have beams up to 36 inches deep. On top of that is a concrete slab that's approximately 6 inches deep. Now, if you have this platform going up and you have all that steel coming down, we need sprinkler pipes, light fixtures, ductwork, things start getting pretty tight. And.
But I don't think these are 16 feet. These rooms.
Floor to floor.
Right.
Yeah.
They're not. Right in this room, in this building, is it?
Well, again, we have to put the air.
No, I'm talking about our building we're in right now.
I don't know what it is.
Right, we're not 16 feet.
I don't know. But, you know, we'll look at it, and again, we have to make sure all the ducts and the pipes and everything else fits.
I understand. I understand.
But it's something we can assess.
So what's the.
Okay. Well, how do you feel on the skylights? I mean, there's.
We can wait on that till we get.
Well, I think that they ought to look at eliminating. That's going to, they're going to make a decision.
If I may, I offer, on the skylight issue, we can offer that on a line item option with the price. You can defer the decision till then.
Okay, thanks.
Then we have to have that.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have, you have an idea of where we want you to go?
Yes.
Where do you think we want you to go?
Turn off the TV.
That's our joke for today.
Oh, man, that's good.
Okay.
I think we're clear that we would stick with the 194.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, John?
I think we're clear with that we'd stick with 194, but I thought I was not clear on the issue of whether we would add additional square footage on the back of the building to get the clerks there, or if we would put the clerks in a empty courtroom upstairs.
I'm not for adding on to the back of the 194,000. I'm not in favor of adding on to the back. I think we need every parking space that's available, so.
Well, we could tell you what it costs.
Yeah, I'd rather have.
I don't care what it costs. I don't care what it costs. I don't want that. I'm sorry.
I'm for, I would like to know the cost because of the clerks should all be in one room. I would like to see that.
And Commissioner Vancy, of course, wants a good quality, right?
Do you have any other questions for us?
Okay, well, then the way.
And I don't want it to be intimidating to the public. Courthouses tend to be intimidating, and I don't, I don't think they should be.
John?
How about we do this? Let's go with the 194,000, and when we come back in two weeks, we'll offer an option, cost and square footage, and perhaps some simple sketches of how we could put the probate clerks on the west end of the first floor. I think there's still room, if you recall, to get to the 194, we reduced that floor plate by about 90 feet. And I think if we put.
Go ahead.
40, 50 feet back on the west end to get the probate clerk on the first floor, we still would have plenty of room for parking, a secure parking lot back by the Alton.
But remember that you're also going to look at putting the Sallyport on that west end, too. Okay? I mean, that's one of the issues that you have put forward here, so you have a lot of homework to do.
Can we change the two weeks to four weeks? No, I'm just kidding.
But that is a consideration, is it not?
Yeah.
All right. So that's why I suggested, I'm not interested in increasing that for the clerks, when you have a larger issue here about where the Sallyport's going to be.
What about that new parking garage? Now, we saved all that money.
You can't afford it, okay? Not only that, the 194,000 takes off the 1 million that was allocated for off-street parking, and our parking situation has not gone away. So we have lots of homework to do.
We got lots to do, too.
And so, but do you understand?
We understand our charge.
Okay.
Okay.
If I could just add one other thing.
Certainly.
One of the exhibits that was given by John to you was a comparison of other courthouses throughout the United States that have been done within the last 10 years or so. Showing you the square footages, the dates, what it cost per square foot then, with an inflation factor bringing it up to this time. We wanted to assure you that we were not gold-plating this building. This is not something that we're putting the most expensive products known to have on this thing. Trying to be prudent, we're trying to think of recyclable products, we're trying to think of products that can be maintained appropriately, and also can last. So that was what we're trying to do. And I'm glad that your numbers basically reflect something that we're providing as a pair of numbers. Is there any other, did you have any concerns or other questions about those comparison costs?
If I could briefly summarize what that report said, we looked at nine other justice centers and/or courthouses and adjusted the actual construction costs so they're comparable to the conditions that we're building here in Valerian. And the average cost of those nine other facilities was $164 a square foot. The budget that we had at 49.9 million was costing $163 a square foot. So at our originally approved program from November of 2000, at 243,000 square feet, we were budgeting our costs to be slightly less than what all these other comparable buildings have been built across the United States.
But weren't you using 3% inflationary growth on that?
Yes.
And you're using 2004 numbers to compare the 163?
Yeah, 2003 numbers, yes.
2003?
Because that's the occupancy date, the projected occupancy date of the building.
Hopefully, it'll be a lot cheaper because we're going to build it, start building before then.
We'll work on it.
Okay.
Is there a resolution by the board?
Do we need a resolution?
Do we need a resolution?
Well, it'll, it'll put us into a direction.
Madam Clerk, I would like to hear from the public before we make a decision on.
Yeah, one other question. I think I missed part.
Good morning, Mr. Navakas.
Brown Avenue House and Clerk of Courts. And that's a question about the probate clerks. The clerks that work for the probate judge are very different from our clerks. These clerks work very closely with the judge. So if you're putting clerks on our floor for some reason and separating them from the judge, I don't think that's a good idea. They do different kinds of work. His clerks work directly with him very often on these individual cases, individual probate cases. They're like accountants working with a specific probate.
And do people come in off the street to see them quite a bit, though?
Yes.
My concern was putting them on the first floor, because they probably come into your office, right?
There are people coming in to see him, but they're seeing the judge, too, I mean.
I think that's just an option. We haven't decided on that yet.
Well, I hope we may.
If you think of our clerks and you think of their clerks, they're just different animals.
Thank you for your comments. I'll say this, this board did make a decision prior to your becoming a commissioner, that after several hearings and a lot of meetings, that we, and this was the direction that the architects took, that the probate clerks would stay with the probate judge.
Are we still there?
I think they're designing it that way.
Do you want us to be there?
I would like it to be there.
No, what we'll do.
I was too busy campaigning.
What we'll do is, we will show you a scenario if the clerks are with the judge, and then we'll show you the scenario of the addition off to the west, if that's where the clerks go, and we'll tell you what the cost hit is on each.
And remember, you're going to put the Sallyport there, too.
We'll show you that scenario.
Thank you. Sheriff Stemedy? Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning.
So Stemedy, Lorraine County Sheriff? I do have some concerns about that Sallyport being on the first floor, because any justice center that I've ever been to, you do have a secure Sallyport when you go to the basement. Cuyahoga Counties like that, Summit County, if it is moved to the first floor, that is going to go into the integrity of security in the building, I can tell you that. And personally, I'd rather see it in the basement myself. I know there's cost factors, but I think if we're building a building that's going to last 100 years, we have to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. You're going to be in the basement. What a shame. Mike Sherman?
Michael Sherman, S-H-E-R-M-A-N, Lorraine County resident, 50.5 years.
Is it your birthday? Is it your birthday?
No, six months, 50.5. Three questions. To date, what is the additional cost incurred by the various Lorraine County departments, staff, architects, construction manager, et cetera, for the additional meetings, review, rework, and redesign of the justice center? What is the estimated additional cost for retention and utilization of the old courthouse, i.e. remodel, additional security concerns, because you're going to maintain two facilities? And what is the estimated factor for the delay in the start of the project? Three questions.
Good point.
Well, number one, I believe they said they were doing this on pro bono.
Yeah, right.
No, they did. They said after our first meeting, when they said, we said we were going to revisit this, I was in that meeting, and they said, yes, for the first three days to get to this point. I don't think after today, it's not pro bono. But I was told, and Mr. Cortez, and the three of us were in that room, remember? Don't throw me out the dry in this one. Correct? To revisit this, to, do you remember this, or no?
I remember the meeting.
I remember that. They said they were going to, that's what I was told.
I believe there were some discussions on cost.
I said I didn't want to spend a bunch of money.
You did say that.
And it was agreed upon, I believe?
It was acknowledged.
I see sweat coming from these hands.
I mean, they've all been back here a number of times. Mr. Roca C. and staff, there's a cost associated with all the rework and redesign and reevaluation, all the, you know, we've become tree assassins with the amount of paperwork that's been generated. There's a cost associated with that. I'm just asking what the additional cost to date has been generated by the rethinking of this project.
A lot less than the 50 million.
It's not zero. It can't be zero.
Well, currently, I have not received any additional billing for what we've been undertaking the last few weeks.
I don't think that the other costs have been calculated, Mike. I mean, I think that's a very valid question, but I just don't think, I think they've been.
Commissioner, I don't expect an answer today, but I would like it on the record. I would like those three.
And your second question was, the first question I got, the second question was.
Retention of the old courthouse?
What is the estimated additional cost for the utilization slash retention of the old courthouse? Their remodeling was mentioned. Obviously, the sheriff is going to have to secure that facility, so you'd be securing two facilities instead of one. So what are those costs? And also, at one of the earlier meetings, there is an estimated cost factor in the delay of the start of the project. I just like those numbers. Thank you.
Okay, and then those are very, very valid questions. Mr. Kish, good morning.
Good morning.
You have questions?
I have questions.
That are going to take less than five minutes?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
First question got me started on this, is why is a seven-story building taller than an 11-story building? Found out we had 16-foot ceilings. It required a variance which is basically breaking the law of the city of Valerian. But they're willing to break the law in order to have the building in the city of Valerian. Other than that, the other thing, like, how many cubic feet, not just square feet in this building? How many cubic feet can be saved? The larger the building, the more cubic feet, the more space to heat and to cool. And I just saw in an article, $3 gas, gasoline prices possibly this summer. Well, it's going to take, heating costs, cooling costs are both going to go up in this building. The larger the building, the volume, the larger the cost. And then I read this in the paper this morning, because I just got around to it this morning. Lorraine County seeks permanent funding fix.
Lorraine County Transit.
Transit. Sorry about that. I'm a little nervous, Senator. This is not my forte.
Getting to be. Sorry, Bob. That's for the hummer jump.
But I'm not adding anything into this, is optional service like transit, cutting the cost for transit. I'm reading the cost of this, and I'm very glad to hear that they're discussing cost. Possibly by the delay, which this gentleman just spoke about, actually may have saved us money. Interest costs are down. But if we're going to go ahead and have a building, we should still have transportation. I don't want to build this building at the very top level, 50 million, and throw something else out in the process. I mean, like I say, there's the fourth estate, the cubic feet, reduction in force, reduction in funds, people are leaving business, one thing, the other. I'm just looking at cost, total cost, and we did cover a lot of that today, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Bob. Hey, I was ready. Other comments or questions from the audience? Mary Beth Derikito, Huntington Township trustee.
Oh, I've been here before. I shall return.
Good morning. I'm Mary Beth Derikito, trustee from Huntington Township. That's D-E-R-I-K-I-T-O. This is to the Lorraine County Commissioners. The Huntington Township Board of Trustees wish to state our appreciation to the commissioners for the time and effort taken to reevaluate the cost and plans proposed for the new Lorraine County courthouse. We encourage you to continue this reevaluation. The project has been under consideration for many years, and to devote a few more months to produce a long-term plan that will most economically and effectively satisfy the needs of the Lorraine County residents and taxpayers now and in the future would be time well spent. Such additional research and planning would, in our opinion, clearly demonstrate that the commissioners take seriously their commitment to serve the best interests of the people of Lorraine County. Many of us remember when reductions in county revenues resulted in severe cuts in services, and strongly urge that you avoid any repetition of that painful situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
Other comments from the audience? If not, I would like to move that the architects and construction managers be requested for our discussion today to look back at the 194,000 square foot proposal that was offered to us in April, include recommendations on the value engineering that was presented to us on May 2nd by our construction manager, and also to look at the aspect of leaving one floor of built-out space rather than throughout the structure.
One second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
I do have a question before I vote on this. Now, what are we eliminating and what are we putting back into that?
That's what, we're asking them to do that.
I was going to ask, if that was the motion, we needed to amend that to indicate that the square footage needed to be slightly adjusted from what was indicated on the plan.
I say using the March design that you guys produced.
Right, but we should put back in the probate.
Probate.
That March plan, so the probate was out.
Right. We should put back in the probate court and the clerks, adult probation.
No, we've not discussed adult probation, Mary Jo. Okay, well, that was what I brought up before. Well, I'm, well.
Well, I'm talking for what I.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Then the law library was omitted. Clerk of, when the Court of Appeals is now omitted, we talked about that. And the visiting court. Visiting court, Court of Appeals, and the law library are omitted. And in my thoughts, probate court and the clerk is back in, which you have excluded here. And the adult probation, as far as I'm concerned, should be back in.
If you like, we can give you an optional add price to put the probation back in.
All right, but what about the footage that we're omitting compared to what we're putting back in?
When we come back with that option, we'll tell you how many feet we have to put back in and what the cost would be to add adult probation. Also, we'll give you an alternate to put the probate clerk on the first floor, as requested before. That's, it would be put, add an addition on the back of the building.
Okay.
With the probate clerk in there, rather than have him in an empty unfinished courtroom space on the upper floor.
But are you talking about putting the probate court with their clerk?
Both options.
That's two options. They're going to be considering all.
All right. I mean, I don't want them separated. I don't, I don't think that's going to be feasible.
Well, let me back up on my motion, even though I voted on it. I said the 194,000 square foot, Commissioner Moore referred to the March design, which perhaps, well, just term it the March 2001 reduced program. And that would address everybody's.
March?
March 2001.
March 2001 reduced program as presented by.
RP, come on.
RP, okay.
Did I give you guys enough, or you look confused?
My hesitation was the adult probation. That was out in the 194,000 square feet, and it does have a major position in that floor plate. So are we to consider options for adult probation in this building?
I think so, or you.
I don't think so.
Or if we don't, we're going to have to find space for them somewhere else and renovate it.
Yeah, bold.
Well, but our intention was to tear down both of those, that awful word, parking.
Or the Gage Building, or other options.
Yeah, there's a lot, we got a lot of empty buildings we're going to have pretty soon, so.
We do.
We're going to have that discussion next, I'm sure.
We do? We will.
We will.
Where are the empty buildings?
Courthouse. No one's gonna be in that room. Gates Building.
Gates Building is not empty. It's full. Totally full.
We're building a $2 million addition on that one. We're gonna have a lot of room after we expand, aren't we?
That's EMA 911.
We'll have the third floor empty.
The third floor will be empty there? And how much space will be in here when the prosecutor leaves?
Some of those people come up to justice?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
But we also have, like, family and children first that's over there at the jobs and family services that should be over here. We have to bring some of those people back home, too, that are scattered around.
That's gonna be the next step.
We were so close and now they're confused again.
No, I'm not confused.
No, no, I said they were. I said the architects.
The adult probation has a component of security. They also have activities in the evening. You know, there are certain things that we have the building open in the evening for that, just the people to visit, the adult probation. And again, like I said, there is an element of security that will have to be provided should that department be in this building. So we need to know, yes, are they or aren't they? If they are, that we have to provide a secure space that somewhat is close to the front door, if you know what I mean?
If we don't provide it there, wherever we put them, we're gonna have to provide it, so...
That's correct.
And we already need the secured space for the courts there, so it might be just a little bit more for them.
But the courts don't operate.
They already have their own space.
Maybe they will operate.
Courts have indicated they could do without the adult probation department in this building.
But then it's gonna cost us, again, to secure someplace else for these people.
That's true. I mean, yes, all we're doing is taking the money out of this building and putting it in that building, but-
No, not as much. We've already... What are they doing right now? They're in the Weber House? Is that now secure? Didn't we just spend a lot of money on Bob's to get that up?
Well, Bob's was renovated to be a temporary courthouse, so to speak, on its own, has courtrooms. They're in the Weber, the old girl's home on Third Street. I would say that that's not a completely suitable location for the long-term prospects of adult probation, but they are in there.
My concern is the security because they'll be open at night.
Well-
And I'd like to have it next to the forensic lab.
Then that would look... Then we would have to take a serious look at some existing use of the Bobble building, or, excuse me, future use of the Bobble building for adult probation rather than for parking.
I hate to say this to these guys, but can you guys give us the option or not? Is that too much work?
The option in this billing?
I prefer not. That's just my own personal opinion. I prefer not to have adult probation in the new center.
Yeah, we'll do that.
If you could say, hey, this is how much it would cost to bring them in.
I think we do need to really come to grips with it inside.
Exactly. I'd prefer... I like where you're at, where we're heading. I just...
And then Betty, I'm not sure if you remember this, but I think 194,000 is scattered space, shelf space, and Betty was talking about having shelf space on one floor. But the 194,000 square foot is scattered shelf space.
194,000 is gross square footage of the entire building.
I'm-
Which pieces of it do right now have scattered shelf space, not the courtroom?
Okay, is that what you-
We'll look into what it takes to consolidate the court so we have any one floor that is-
Which will bring the cost down.
And they'll look at it, so, okay.
So do we have to amend the motion?
Well, I can't... If you second it, if you're willing to, which got Roxanne.
What we're voting on here?
You mentioned about the space before, but to authorize architects to come back, I'll put the date in of May 24th. The 194,000 square feet from the May... Excuse me, March 2nd, 2001 reduced program as presented by RP Carboni. And do you put in or to omit those departments that we mentioned, many of those departments?
Omitting the law library?
Yeah, like the Court of Appeals.
Court of Appeals and visiting judge?
Yeah.
I mean, the visiting court. And what about-
And then come up with an option for the adult probation to be in or not.
Right. They're gonna come back with an option for adult probation?
Okay.
And what about probate court? Two options with probate.
Yep. And the clerks.
Okay, and they have over here a visiting court, large behind it. What does that mean?
I'm sorry?
Look, in the visiting court, and in parentheses, it says large.
They had a... The original design commissioner, he had a larger courtroom for-
High-profile cases.
You're right. I believe that larger courtroom was reduced in that plan, Bob?
No, we still have a larger courtroom. We called it visiting court at one time.
Okay.
We're just gonna change it into a courtroom used by the general division judges for the high-profile cases. It has a larger audience.
And they can share it, swap it around, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. So do we think we know where we're going? And that motion sounds pretty good?
Sounds good.
Okay, you wanna recall the rule again, then?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye. All right. Commissioner Moore made a motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
By the way, commissioners, it was Roxanne's last birthday yesterday.
If you'd been here on time, you would've known that. We announced it at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, hell's still rolling the rocks. I'm getting you. Okay, so happy birthday.
We did that at the beginning of the meeting.